Like to call this meeting to order. Pursuing Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty Eight. Section Twenty hereby. Informing all attendees that a video and audio recording will be made of this meeting. Anyone else is recording, please inform the chair. First up, we have a public comment. Hi Kathy.
I'm here to give you an update on the open space recreation plan. We met with the commission map. That May twenty eighth. To discuss. The information that Seth Jenkins. Received from Marissa Crin of what still needed to be added to the plan. But we met on twenty of May. We discussed the ad. Things had a discussion on what we would still like to have in plan. Seth has completed all of that. But he has sent. Electronically a copy to Chris Burton. So that that will be presented to the select board. With their meeting. It's June eighteen. And then it will be submitted to. The planning board. I did ask Seth. What the protocol was and he said as long as both boards. Were informed and voting on it. They did that. But at any rate. Um Mary Brittany, I, the co-chair of the open space and that. And see the. Final draft, what we call the final draft. And I just sent that to all members of. Open space or right. Plan. Maybe. Um so he cannot see anything that. Um should be corrected or whatever. We have nothing to be able to get that information to. But just wanted to let you know. We're looking at it.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for all your work Kathy.
Thank you Kathy. Alright. No more public comment, um we have. Who said some minutes?
Actually, it was both, we'll take one at a time.
Yep.
Uh I'll say um uh in favor of accepting amendments for April twenty second. Uh twenty twenty four. As written.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Peg. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none, go around the room. Conrad.
Hi.
Peg.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Uh we have another set.
I'm good with that one also. Dan's a little.
It's June tenth.
Taking time off.
He has no power. He didn't come up with that now.
Uh are you set, are you making that?
Yeah, June tenth, twenty fourth. In favor, except for as written.
Uh second up.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes for June? June tenth. So it's May. No, May thir- May thirteenth. We have, today's June tenth.
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, yeah. Those ones.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Hearing none. Go around the room, Conrad.
Aye.
Peg.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye, minutes for May thirteenth. And so we begin. Form a night. Here we go. Uh we'll just go in order. Hop. Hop.
Okay. Yeah, patients. Okay. We're gonna use your please.
Leisure Lee insists.
This is what we do. Almost off at the end. Where Woodstock cuts down and goes into the boat ramp or whatever is down there.
Yeah.
Uh you got two brothers. Richard and Robert that own a two budding houses to the green here. And they own this lot in the middle that's outlined in cream together. And what they want to do now is split it. And each take a half. Thereby putting uh. Take it so. Richard's driveway onto his lot. And his brother would end up with the other piece. All you're doing is to make it lock in the middle that they both own. Putting it.
It goes one side to that.
Yeah.
So.
Sounds good.
Driveway stays on his property, so there's no deal there.
Does it create any non-conformity?
Nope.
No.
Nope. Just pretty simple.
Yeah.
Most of the ones I.
Yeah.
Door doors. Hop. Plan I think. For me.
You have.
As shown on. The Sonic Land Consultants. Locust map. Dated May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
No move, sir, a second.
I'll second.
Dave, for a second. Uh any discussion? Hearing none, I'll go around the room, Conrad.
Aye.
Peg.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Let's start signing.
How many plans do you normally sign? Stacy keep. Four.
We can add one to this for the table. Yep. Yep.
There's all done. Mr. Byler. Everyone's on the phone.
You said.
This looks good.
Okay. Like I've talked to you a little bit. We've done so many of these, but then I never know the next steps.
Well, what happens next?
Yeah, where's the paperwork come from? From you or?
No, that would be your lawyer that's going to write up the deed.
Okay.
I can record the plan or he can release those, record the plan that's. Anybody to report the plan. Just recording a plan doesn't make it happen.
Do you hand all these over to?
Usually to an attorney.
To an attorney.
Yep. Yes. Watching you exactly do that in my region. Look at it folding.
Good.
I know.
He's only done two years of practice.
Which one is the next one?
Yeah.
Uh Mitchell.
This one was, this one was to us a few months ago.
Yep, for the son to take out a lot at one corner.
Well, that's.
Yep. This one.
So why is this back?
It's back because in the previous plan, the father owned a little lot right here, like a three acre lot.
Okay.
But he also owned all the land around it.
Right.
So the assessors were taxing him for two lots. So what he's doing now is combining them all into one lot. Is there one ownership?
Because that wasn't really clear in the plan.
Yeah. All he's doing is this is just a perimeter plan for one lot. Yeah. Yep. So if somebody surveys all the property and puts it in registry deeds, it's approved. Yeah, so that's basically all that's happening here. Yep. If you want to see the other plan where the other lots there. There's.
That's why I just computed, because I know we took the.
Yeah.
One over the corner.
Yep.
That would be excised out of the bigger.
That's already been done.
Which has already been done, then this one here. It just looks like it was the same plan coming back.
No, see, the, the, it was the grandfather that. Of him that owned all of it. And his son got this and his son got this.
Right.
And now because. The one in the middle now owns it all, he wants to combine it. All in the one.
And it didn't do that.
Automatically, no, because this met zoning.
Oh, gotcha. If it didn't meet something.
If it didn't meet, yeah, if it didn't meet zoning, it would have been absorbed by the, the bigger lot.
Okay.
But because it met zoning, this tax, especially it's kept it as a separate lot, so he's getting taxed on two lots.
Gotcha.
So they want to just take care of it and just make it all one lot.
Those damn accessories.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah.
I know somebody else in that same situation.
Yeah. They're just trying to save a buck here, I guess, by uh combining it all into one lot. But that's all that's happening, this is just a perimeter plan for the same ownership. Yeah.
You see.
Okay, yep. One lot subdivision?
Wow.
No.
That's the opposite of subdivision.
Opposite.
Right?
Don't even say those words.
One lot division?
Consolidation.
Consolidation, yeah.
One lot.
Consolidation.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, so again, I, I'm not remembering as much as Conrad is.
Sure.
Where are the, what is it being consolidated, this is the, this is the description to what ends, it ends up.
Yeah, originally. The son. Okay. Uh actually, it's gonna be the one that, the father, the one we were in here for last time.
Yeah.
Owns this house. Inside a three acre lot. It's not shown because it's now part of this bigger one.
Okay.
He owns this because he got it from his father.
So at the time. We're approving a consolidation of the three acre lot. With the lot that surrounds.
Correct, that's it.
Okay.
That's all that's happened.
Just wasn't clear on the plan, that's why.
Right.
Change.
Yeah.
Changing the boundary lines.
Yeah, there's really nothing really changing there. Ownership's still the same, it was just under two different.
Right. And this requires our approval?
It, it's entitled to a form a approval, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And you're asking for it, but I just wondered why you need it.
Uh I could have taken, I, I could have taken the route with a no new boundary lines.
Yeah.
An eighty one X.
That means.
Well, the different endorsement, that I didn't need this, I could have put down. Where I signed it under here, that's an eighty inch X. Okay, and just put it in the registry deeds. But I always like coming to the planning board. Because it's entitled to form a endorsement.
Okay.
And it actually carries with it. All those things that go with a form A. The protections. There's certain things that go with form A. That protect zoning freezes and stuff. So it's entitled to it, so I, I recommend that my client.
Yeah, so this is. All the history gets wiped clean. All of the boundaries from before.
Yes.
Are gone.
That's correct. It, it, it doesn't stop him, Mitchell, the father. From in the future, selling from their previous plan, a three acre lot to somebody.
That was, that's part of this?
No, no. Not part of this survey.
Yeah.
But there's a survey for this house lot out that was taken out in the seventies or eighties.
Yeah.
This piece. Okay, it meets today's zone. Okay.
Yeah.
No, he won't, he won't have to come back, he sells it exactly the same as he bought it. Because there's already a plan there. But it has, if you change zoning and change frontage and stuff, then he's gonna have to change the lines, but if he doesn't. He doesn't need to come back, it's already there.
It's already there.
And assessors only go by the last thing you put on record. So we're putting in this on record, so it's the last thing, so this, this will govern for tax purposes.
But hypothetically, if he did want to. Put that probably line back.
Yeah.
For the purpose of his. Of a sale.
Sale.
And how the, how the. Or the assessors is going to know.
Oh, because he'll have to, he will have to report the deed.
Which should accompany and will serve it.
No, no, it can't reference a plan from before.
So, so for purposes of selling the property. The two lots remain to stink. But for purposes of assessment, the two lots are combined.
Correct. Although they're, they're actually under the same ownership, the same name, I couldn't do this. They're under the exact same name. So I couldn't do this.
Yeah, I'm surprised you can do the first.
Yeah. If they, if they were in separate names, this house were in separate names in the backland, I could not do this plan.
Will there be deeds executed to?
For this?
For this?
No. Nope.
So the only effect of this decision tonight is to change the tax.
That's it.
Save a money taxes.
That's.
See, I'm following all that, that. This is fine with me. What I'm concerned about is if these gentlemen wanted, is Dale, right?
Dale, yep.
If Dale wanted to sell the other piece.
Yeah.
Yes, there was a deed back in the seventies, I guess you said?
I want to say he bought it in the seventies or eighties from his father.
From his dad.
Yeah.
So then it just seems to me that. Yes, there's a deed on it, it just seems like this would have to come back. For form A again, to bring that plot line back. For purposes of recording.
I, I, no, that, that plans that he had done, actually it was nineteen eighty four.
Hmm.
That plan that he had done in nineteen eighty four meets his zoning of today.
Oh.
So he's not coming back. Yeah.
That's weird.
He's got.
They were two maps, they used that map.
They would just use that, just fix it and just convey it away.
So I don't understand how Massachusetts law works on this, I think in the. Common law, when you. Buy a lot and then you buy the next lot. Boundary between them disappears through a concept called merger.
Only, only, only if one of the lots is not conforming.
Well, that must be a Massachusetts squiggle.
Yeah.
Thing, because I never heard of that.
Because you can own, you can own two houses of budding each other, two, two properties.
Well, I do own, actually own two properties and they treat them as two lots and I thought I was merging it, but they. They've been treating it as two lots for ten years.
Yeah, the only way they would merge them in zoning is if one of them was not conforming, then the other one has to acquire whatever it takes to make it meet zone.
Do you have your two pieces? Titled?
In the same name?
Same name or? Same year. Same name.
Hmm.
You would think that would be a merger. You would think. I would, I would, I thought it would accomplish merger, but your predecessors disagreed. And I didn't appeal, so I'm not, I'm not a lot, but. Um I. I'll, I'll vote for this, but I. I am deeply puzzled by how you can file a plat. That says this is the boundary of the property.
Hmm.
And then later create a subdivision in that property that creates a new lot. And not get approval for that. And although you think it somehow survived tonight. That the, the rights survive through tonight's declaration of a single plat.
It, it goes to this here, if you go back to the original survey that was done, it was signed by a planning board.
Yeah.
It, it is binding on you.
I don't care if it was signed by the Pope.
Well, I'm just saying, it's still binding on everybody. In that it meets.
And so it's void.
Today.
And tonight it's void.
Oh, no, it's still not void.
That's the issue.
No, no. It's just one.
No man's land.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no. It, it, this is really.
The ghost for me.
Look, this, this comes down to an issue that you're, you're, you're beating on the door that I have an issue with. And the tax assessors only go by the latest thing that you put on file. It could be a deed. It could be a plan. I always said it should be a deed, because if I report this plan and I don't ever write a deed for anything, nothing ever happened. I could walk right out and throw it in the garbage, right? Nothing ever happened. But if I write the deed. Deed is what transfers the property and shows the real intent.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, but they don't do that, they, they go by the last thing.
I'm not, I, I don't care what the, I mean, I do care what the assessors do, but for tonight, I don't care.
Yeah.
I, I'm just trying to figure out how.
Yeah.
You can have it both ways, but that's all.
We're, we're learning tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I've actually told my clients this too, and I want to get a lot of form A lots, just form A them all off on one thing, get it signed, put it in your back pocket, come back and do them individually now. Because otherwise, if it takes too long to sell them, you lost all your money on the network.
Hmm, there you go, you never know who's gonna do it.
Or, or, or take that plan with all the lots on it, record it. The tax, tax assessors are gonna cha-ching, and then you come back with one of these, combining them all again. Then you go back to the old plan.
Well, you're just explaining to me why this absolutely makes no sense.
It's just the way it's done.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Well.
But there was also an easement for the father to come across the father, grandpa's. And, and so you don't, you can't have an easement over your own property, so that's dropped too.
Oh.
Unless, unless the ghost survives.
Right, but that's on the other plan.
But the easement goes to Dale's son over another corner.
No, no, he's, he doesn't have an easement yet over that.
Oh.
So he's got the lot, but does it have actions?
Oh, yeah, he's got access, he's got a lot of fun here.
Yeah, get up it.
I don't know. They're gonna have to do that with the building inspector and whatever else. Yeah, it, it's real front, you can get off. No, no, you can definitely get off that road.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, that's another subject.
That's another night.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this.
It's alright with me.
But they did build the gradually all the way across, and that was probably the original.
Yeah.
And it may.
Not a legal right of.
No, not yet, it's not. So.
I want to ask how you do that, but I don't want to.
Yeah, there's nothing there. There's no right of. They never granted the son of them.
And the right of way would be written into a deed.
Into a deed.
There, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was actually quick.
It doesn't have to come back before the board.
Okay, um. Enough school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh is there a motion?
Form A one oh one.
Yeah.
Uh I make a motion to.
Endorse.
Endorse. And we. By and provided by Chicagway Consultants dated. Five thirty twenty twenty four. Yes, a bit of.
Second.
Second by Peg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go around the room, Conrad.
Aye.
Peg.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Alright.
We know.
Way we go.
There we go. Long out of here. You got another one to go up, you know. It's like I said, thirty eight years of doing this, it's never happened to me before.
Oh, wow.
No, if I'm like one of the last ones, lots of lies. Right out of my house. Which is where, in Landville.
But, right.
Always want. My own little thing. Just me and my brother man. Two chiefs, we can't go off together. Yeah, send two chiefs out of his job.
Why you need a zone?
Hmm.
Why we need one?
Well, I got a brother that's a lawyer and I got another one that's a doctor.
I need is the Indian chief, you're all set.
Yeah.
That's great.
Start playing hockey again in another week. Next one's a tough one to go to. Yeah.
You only got, well, Dan gets to do something now.
Say it's a tough one to last.
There's a little few more lines there.
It's more confusing than everything.
See if I did this right.
Oh, you, you took the challenge, huh?
Hey.
I think you got it.
Approximately.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this moment, I'll relinquish the chair to uh. Peter, I think, right?
Yeah.
No, it's okay.
I'll just stay, I'll just stay here still, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Uh okay, so the next one is. John Buck Donovan's subdivision. Uh you want to make a presentation, Pat?
Yep. Uh this is Buck's uh property up off of Landers Road, his house. And what he's proposing to do is reconfigure his house lot. And some land in the back to make another lot. So let me put some copies out here so I can show you what's going on.
I can see from here, you know.
Alright.
Over there.
So where's Buck's house?
Buck's house is lot number one on the plan, so it's this here. Okay, and it loops around and it comes around. And it attaches to lot number two. So lot one and two is what is lot, house lot looks like today. Okay? So if you took lot one, added it with lot two.
He's got that U shape over it.
Yep, he does.
That is.
Okay, so what he's looking to do. Is take lot number two. And combine it with lot number four, which is backland he owns. To form one lot. Then he needs to make this lot number one bigger, so he's adding lot number three to it.
Which is maybe one and three. Which is already his land.
It's already his.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so one and three are going to be one lot and two and four are going to be one.
Okay. And does that explain on the?
Yeah, it's written underneath the, the things here. Lot one is to be combined with blah blah blah. Okay.
Second, David, he's already been.
Second, they've, he's already been.
Already, that's already been done, yeah.
Board members have any questions, comments? Conrad?
Well, house, that's gonna go with this piece. Just for the.
No.
Does say. Lot number four. Combined.
This is being combined.
It's gonna be a separate. Oh, a separate building, okay.
Because we have to up that CR zone, so we have to keep.
Okay.
Dan, are you still on?
Yes.
You want to say anything, or do you want to vote on this, or do you want to?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at the, the slides from my laptop here, so I'm, I'm muddling through, thank you.
You need any further explanation from Pat?
That for your kids.
I, I kind of have an idea of, of what uh Mr. Donovan's looking to do, I, I kind of grew up on that side of town as well.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Peg, did you want to say anything?
No.
Dave?
No.
Okay.
It's all right.
What is the board's wish? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Endorse.
Endorse. Uh. A lot as, or the, forming as presented. Date of, date of May thirty of twenty twenty-four. By Pat Colgan.
By Ted Travis.
Is it second?
Not as good, sure.
Okay, Conrad seconds?
Yes.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those, oh, I, I gotta do a roll call. Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Peter, hi. The uh plan is endorsed.
How many signatures we need done?
Three, you're five on the board.
I don't know.
So you only need three, right?
Sure.
But we're all.
We're all set with who's out here.
Sign the table, I'll put you at the table.
Yes.
Just sign who's here at the table, that's all. No.
Isn't the famous?
Oh.
I like it. Make a monster in the way. Yeah.
I know, it's totally complicated when you see them.
Those are twenty. Off there, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. One of the ones that passed away, John Kent. They ended up, they ended up a lot more acreage than I thought. Yeah. I mean, it'd make no sense, but. You know, put two hundred feet here and then leave this, leave this lot. Yeah. So you're not really gonna use anything from your work this way. Little more ink, can you want to put no bill, yeah, I think so. Yeah. But I was out there though, I, there was black bears running around almost every time I was up there.
Oh, I can believe that.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, it's, it's crazy with bears and that, like.
I could listen to the houses, the dogs barking as they was going down, it's like we bird feeders in the neighborhood. Sure. Yeah, four, I'm gonna take, I don't know. This is our bunch from Michigan. Oh. Down on East Street. April Street. Oh, we are. Yeah. Yeah. I see here. Done it. Over here. Yes, so. You just have to ask us. Yeah, I got to. Yeah, it's stored on the file. All I can tell you is I don't know when.
See you next time.
No.
Wow.
All right, this is good. I'd like my customers to go away happy, oh, I've been saying that.
Yeah, right. You know what I'm so pleased with, is you put a few months. Yeah. Don't think I didn't look at that and see if there were any fish in there.
Bad?
I did, I seen them in there. Mm-hmm.
Best when they transfer their ownership, uh, I tell everybody, yeah. We still ice fish up there, nothing's gonna change. Little bit of acid, nothing big's gonna.
You want to listen to it? Just the old?
All the way down to the turf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They gotta take out. They do. But just. They're.
And maybe selling, he's married to her.
I'm gonna take it. I'll take it on there. Then the water take, I just think it's a big one that's tall. You know. Who's this? About dates, Bob. Same as it is now, yeah, got it. Yeah. What do you need on this? Two more signatures and a date?
Oh, seven.
Do I need to sign that?
No. And apparently only three signatures are needed, although we did get five votes. So we're gonna get four signatures, that's more than enough.
Okay.
Perfect, thanks, Peter.
Well, it's, it's, we'll actually put a thing on file, but I just, I only have one person assigned. That doesn't work out too well.
You wanted the same person all the time.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Next week, you know.
Well, whatever. That one. And you can have. And like I said, don't report it. Do you have a buyer?
Right.
Or the taxes.
Yeah.
Get from that.
Right. Don't fall. How many fish? You have four there, right? There are three or four.
Three there, three there.
That's it. Tell you what, those papers feel like it keeps getting thinner and thinner.
Oh, yeah.
You know? Um. More, more, more expensive and thinner.
Back in my day, you had to hire an elephant.
Oh. You saw my printers, I do these time and you laugh.
No.
They're, they're from the like nineteen eighties or nineteen nineties.
That bad?
Oh, no, they're that old. Quite honestly, yeah, I like them because they're made out of steel. And I've learned to work on them myself, and I've got all the parts and I store them.
Oh.
And I could get the cartridges on eBay for like five bucks a piece now or less.
Just a two-five-ten.
No, it's actually the HP uh seven fifty C.
Well, I, we have a newer HP, we got rid of our old one, you know? Yeah, you've priced this thing so much.
Oh, yeah, and I, the only thing I do is I have a tough time, you can't, you can't use it with newer. Uh, Windows ten or eleven. So I have Windows XP, which I'm. Oh, my box. Yes, take a USB drive over there.
All right, thank you.
You gotta work something.
Yeah.
All right. I'll get back around here.
Hey.
Okay, next, just for formality, is any topic Chair could not reasonably anticipate, and um. I don't even know if we. Could still have that on there. Because every board, I'm, even Berkshire Regional, we're not. Really taking any uh. Uh, delegate comments because there's such issues, so.
Because, why? Because people are so upset about the public, right, public meetings.
Yes. Yes. If you start trying to discuss anything not on the agenda, they.
How about putting something on a future agenda, can that be brought up?
That can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. So I'd like to discuss at the next meeting. Uh, the uh. Implementation of the master plan and the. Uh, arrival of a new planner. We, that's the thing I'd like to know, but I can't ask. Yeah.
I, yeah. Can we? There's two more. Wednesday or two interviews.
Oh.
For the final two candidates.
Oh, okay, so it's not, not a final pick?
No, there's no final pick yet.
Okay.
Um, did we reorganize? Not that I want to reorganize.
Yeah, I believe we did.
Oh, that's my mistake. I must have missed sleeping that night.
I don't think we did.
No, I think you're right, Peg.
Okay.
We might not have, we should put that on the agenda for next.
Next time, I mean, I like things the way they are. I'm more than happy.
Master plan implemented.
Yeah.
And um, we might know who's the planner by then, too.
We're reorganizing, not, I'm not advocating. I like things the way they are.